I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. School Committee, Tuesday, July 16th. And just begin with any comment from the public? Public comment? You're welcome to come up to a microphone and tell us what is on your mind. Okay. They're the private. Just like to mention that all the people who are to be reappointed have been reappointed. Fort Spalding, Jim Gamble, and Dave O'Connor have all received reappointments for an additional three-year term. And as we know, Carrie has decided to leave the committee and Steve, she'll be replaced by, her replacement will be Steve Ledoux, who is not able to be here tonight. Dave?
Dave, my term is for one year.
Of course. We'll see what we can do about that.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Here's Dave O'Connor. We now have the seven people going to be here. Yeah, tonight, Steve Ledoux will not be here. Had a pre, he'd already had something scheduled before he was appointed. Jennifer Leone and Sue Scheffler are not going to be able to be here tonight. So, moving on to the report of the 2019-2020 School Committee goals, which really are part and parcel of the superintendent goals. And there is a draft in our packet, starting on page three, regarding the draft of the superintendent's goals. And he, I'm not, Ed, did you send the superintendent competency model, did you send that to everybody or does?
No. In addition to this in your packet, I sent to the superintendent's negotiations and evaluations subcommittee chair and you, a competency model.
Right.
A leadership competency model. Did you share that at your meeting that you had? I don't think you had it by then.
I don't recall.
Okay. So, just to review, you, the last meeting was, first of all, we wanted to start the process earlier. Second of all, we wanted to look at different methods that might capture some of the leadership qualities that the school committee expects a superintendent to have. And that was the intent of those two documents. So, I can forward those all to the whole committee for a review.
Yeah, that would be fine.
It's just, this is to give you some food for thought. We also included in here the superintendent goals from 10 years ago.
Right, I saw that.
Which, you know, we've come a long way, I guess, but there's a lot of similar goals. Greg, you're not into 10 years ago, although it was, you were here. So, and you also talked about calling things out in a way that was easier for the evidence to support an evaluation rating by the school committee.
Correct. You also talked, I think, the last time about doing the 360-degree feedback.
Yeah. Years ago, before the department imposed their process on this, I had used an instrument that gave the school committee opportunity to give me feedback, also staff, my leadership team, and I think there was another grouping.
Bedstaff, the leadership team and managers, the CVTE faculty and staff of the school committee.
Yeah, so I sent that report to you as well.
Staff and staff, yeah.
And to Jennifer, to get a sense of what that report provided. It's based upon the competency model. So, I'm hoping to ask the subcommittee there if they'll meet again and I'll meet with them and talk about it, see what you want to do to recommend to the whole school committee.
Also, if anyone, yeah, I was just going to say, if anyone has a suggestion for either a different goal or wording or whatever, or focus, or to, please send that to Julia and Julia will forward it to the committee.
Why isn't there a goal of overseeing the successful transition to the new building?
We don't need that. It's going to happen.
Yes, but that's just the kind of the comment I brought up last time. So, here we have again, you know, so most people would say, gee, that's really an important thing we're doing this year. But because it's kind of more of a mechanical thing, it's, you left it off of your list.
It's more transactional.
Perhaps more transactional, but it wouldn't hurt to put that here as well, because for most people, when they were in a year like this, creating their goals, they'd probably have that as number one. I understand why it isn't and why you chose not to put it here, but I would put it on the list personally. For you, it'll be probably a pretty easy goal compared to some of these others, but still maybe it should be on the list.
Anyone else have a question or comment about it? Okay, so.
That's it, yeah. So, any comments or something, just send to me an email directly.
And also, did you, through Julie or you directly?
Always copy Julia on anything you send me.
And then those, any comments would then go to the committee if they want to work with you and, who will be working with you. Yeah, the 360-degree feedback was done in 2013, October 2013. I remember we doing that. So, and did you find that a useful activity?
Oh, it was very useful, yeah.
So, that could be used again this year and to see for additional feedback.
Actually, one of the goals is that we develop that, I guess, so.
Yes, I saw that.
We'll see how that goes.
Okay. Any other comment or question about it? All right. Fort Spalding.
This is a building committee report, which we're going to have our team here tonight, who will give it, and then I'll have some comments when we're done. But I've asked Trip McElroy from Gilbane to give a run-through of what he did the other, yesterday for the building committee, so we'll know where we are in terms of being up to date, where we're going for the next couple of months. And Greg Joynt, who's going to talk about anything that you have questions about related to the construction design of the building. And Mary Ann Williams, our owner's project manager, so. Trip?
Yes, sir.
Take it away.
Evening, everybody. It's been a few months since we've met last. So, I think the last thing about it was in April, so a lot of good progress and activity on site. So, we're working towards TCO actually next week, so there's a lot of classrooms that are very similar state of construction, so I didn't overwhelm the presentation with the same picture over and over. So, the top picture is kind of a shot of the typical classroom in its current state. We've ripped out all the temp protection that we had on the flooring. We've washed and lapped the floors within the classroom spaces. And furniture began delivery on time last week, so deliveries of furniture occurred last week, ongoing this week, and then we've actually started to assemble the furniture and bring them into the classroom and other spaces throughout the building. The shot below is actually a shot in lower AV engineering labs. This is actually the electrical lab, pretty much in its finished state. It actually, this includes cleaning and sealing the floors within that engineering space in the down below picture there, so. G, area G is a very similar condition. I didn't take pictures of it because it was a repeat of the pictures you just saw, but then going up into upper D, which is the classroom space that surrounds the perimeter of the gymnasium, same, same condition. We've washed and waxed and we've actually started moving the furniture up in those spaces as well. The locker room is down on the lower level of D, off the gymnasium. The floor, wall tiles have been completed, the routing operation has been completed for dropping the places of the ceiling tiles. And then actually, this was kind of the unique spaces in that there was epoxy, quarter-placed epoxy flooring systems throughout the locker room spaces. So, that's what you see here. It's tough to see in the picture, but it's a white-flecked epoxy flooring within that space, but there are over bases throughout the areas. Lockers have been set within those spaces and they're working on. The next major activity for us in there is for the fixtures, for the partitions, and the miscellaneous finishes to wrap up the locker. Then jumping out into the gymnasium. This is a shot earlier in the week, the bleacher install, which is on the north and south end of the bleacher, of the gymnasium is in progress. You can kind of see the stacks of bleachers assembled, and now they're working on actually installing the seating system of blue material. So, they're working to wrap up this week and next week the bleachers. Then we have the wall mats to be installed around the perimeter of the gym and install huge floorboards on each end of the gymnasium. The gymnasium floor has been completed, striped and sealed, so we're pretty much wrapping up the finishes within the gymnasium and working our way out and give a plan of cleaning that space.
What are those square, blue and gold?
So, this is a Tekken product. These are basically an acoustic panel around the perimeter of the gymnasium that helps with acoustics, with noise, reducing the noise and echo, echo within the space.
For reverberation. It's amazing when you go in there, how it doesn't sound.
And then going over to E, the E stack, so this is your admin main entrance area. The top picture is the media center. Carpet and other finishes are going in. Millwork is wrapping up. This is the new checkout desk in the space. This is a big milestone, because this is actually a heavy lift for furniture that's coming in as a calendar this week. This is actually the assembled bookcases and other materials within the media center. So, this picture is going to get filled with furniture quite quickly. And then down below, this is actually a shot as you walk directly in. I just walked through the main entrance doors, this is the below picture. We worked last week to put down the large format ceramic floor tile. Routing operations wrapping up today, and we'll put down protection that then allow to support furniture deliveries to this space. As I go into the admin space, we'll let you decide. Then this is a shot of cafeteria from the upper level.
Student union.
Student union. Or B, correct. So, this has always been a great picture. We've always shared with the building committee each month. It shows a lot of progress and I commented last night, last month's picture of this area, we were actually flooding the ceiling tiles within this space, so. Blood's happened within a month and that ceramic wall tile has been completed throughout the area and the space. We put the vinyl tile flooring down, has put down protection. Now this is somewhat acting as the furniture layout and then the dispersion there throughout the space. So, big open, nice, nice, nice space for the student area now. So, this is in area F. This is Cosmo Culinary Restaurant area. Similar state of construction. Flooring has been put down, protection is down currently. Millwork is working to wrap up items within there, but this is the partition desk there. You can see in the background, it's protected with the boxes, but this is the hair washing sink station within the culinary labs. I'm not calling it Cosmo Labs. And then down below, both kitchens, culinary and then the E-F cafeteria kitchen are in the similar states. Epoxy flooring has been completed and protected. All the kitchen equipment, loose and fixed, are now on site and they're working on making the final mechanical electrical connections to all that equipment in both those spaces. The theater. So, moving into the theater, this was, as we've talked about over the years, a very complex area of the building. Couple shots up above, the top shot is actually the tension grid, which you see here in the lower picture. So, this is the hanging tension grid. And over the last two months, we've gotten pipe grid installed, which are these interconnected pipelines. And then it's tough to see because it's all, it's all black fixtures, but we have house legging fixtures installed and lit up, and as well as all the AV and electrical that is throughout that tension grid. And that allows the students to go in there to plug and play light fixtures that would shine down through the tension grid and go plug in any type of AV items, whether it's a headset or microphones that they can communicate with the tension grid down to the stage or back to the house. So, a lot, a lot of work up here. It's tough to see because there was a lot of man hours spent electrical that were brought in for what was there.
The plywood flooring you see is only there because they were bringing ladders up to do a lot of the work, but that will be gone. And then you'll, the students will be walking on top of the grid looking down, you said, doing the work.
Yeah, and the fourth way too, there's also a layer of poly for the ladders as well, so all of that will come out to allow that light to shine down into the space. And then on the, on the stage side, a lot of activity. We've gotten the mechanical hoist installed, which is on stage left, if you don't see in the picture. And then on stage right, that you see here, this is the guide wall and the actual counterweight system, where the students will be able to put on the weight system, on and off, off these loading bridges at the catwalk levels. And then all of that then feeds up into a pulley system of that 70-foot-high tower area of the flywalt. That's what you actually see now with all those, all the cable rigging that comes down and is connected to all these rigging systems. What they're doing right now is they're dropping all that rigging system, they're balancing all that, getting the lengths correct. And they're actually going to start installing the battens where light fixtures, sets, or curtains are then attached to, and then raised and lowered above and below that stage here. And so, they are actually working to wrap up the next week and a half that they're still in this space, which is a big milestone, need all that stuff done off the job site. And then kind of focused on the outside, we've had a lot of progress with those activities. This is a shot of the courtyard. So, the landscaping wall has had all the masonry veneer put onto it. The mason is actually working to wrap up the prep caps, caps that go on top of that wall. Landscaping has progressed and installed the wall, and then they're working on planting the plantings within that bed. And then the other big milestone is the pavers has gone down and worked their way out of the courtyard and has worked their way to the front entrance of the building. You'll see these subsequent pictures coming up. This is coming through that double-door entrance here, so there's access from the exterior as needed, and access to courtyard for events or anything else the school may schedule. So, as you walk through those doors, the pavers continue. And then you walk out to the front first curb. So, the pavers have, they've completed up the main entrance around the corner. All the granite bollards have been installed and set. And again, this is a shot of the main entrance being wrapped up exterior finishes. And as you kind of turn 180 degrees from where I was just standing, we're facing now east into the faculty park, faculty parking lot. The pavers in between the two concrete speed tables have been completed. And you can see the paver crew working their way down toward the student lot. We are working on sidewalk installation, placing and protecting the tiny sidewalks. Speed table has been placed. We're actually working on prepping to place the next speed table, the second speed table as well in this faculty parking lot area. Other finishes, sight lighting has gone in and all the holes have been lit up. Plantings have been going on around the perimeter of the building. We're going to start working on some of the islands this week and next week to start some of the planting within the faculty parking lot. And then one of the big milestones we had last month at the end of May was we actually paved, put down the binder coat throughout the faculty parking lot, as well as the roof route, roof road around the perimeter of the building. And in the subsequent week, we're actually working on the student parking lot now, bringing that subgrade up, getting towards a, a prep and pave date next week, starting on the 22nd. So, the goal is to put final binder down in the faculty parking lot, roof road around the building, and then the binder go down to the student parking lot. This is a shot far, far east side of the site, looking back at the new building. So, this is the student parking lot, which these jersey barriers are actually rain guard drainage systems that we're working on. So, those are the next, we're going to prep drainage lines are installed, stone is installed, so we're going to start bringing those systems up. And these are kind of the aisleways within the student parking lot that will have the parking spaces off of them. So, we brought this area basically to subgrade. They're going to start working on importing the dense grade material to bring that elevation back up, be ready for start of prep and paving.
Is that part of, with that dense material, is that what you, like, rock in the land and kind of piled up on the side or is it kind of the wall?
Yeah, no, the majority of it has, yeah. So, we're actually, at this point, we've used up all of the dense grade. We, they processed several different types of material on the job site, including the lead that we took out of the site. There's also the subsurface sort of as well. The dense grade, which is a larger aggregate material that they typically use in the roadways and pavement, they've processed that. We've actually expended, used all that that they currently had. We're actually working to import a few loads of that, but of all those piles that we've seen over the few years, this is the last one right there. So, that pile is going to start disappearing to get faded out for the rest of the site and then that goes. So, yeah, they did well with their soil management in terms of what they had inside. We were able to mix and make the required specs, so. So, we kind of wanted to share with you guys the project turnover schedule, the next month and a half, leading up to the start of schools, so everybody has a good idea of where we're at and what the, what the activities are over the next month and a half. So, new furniture delivery started as scheduled last week. Assembly and dispersion throughout the building started this week, and that's going to go through, through the end of this month. We are going for the TCO for staff for next Thursday, 7:25. So, we've been working with the building inspector, the electrical inspector, and the plumbing inspector to coordinate those inspections. The electrical inspector has already been through two major areas of the building, AV, upper level, and level G, has signed off those areas of the building. He is scheduled to begin this week, the next week, walk in the buildings as well.
All of those inspections are done by Lincoln personnel?
That's correct. It's not a Lincoln, that's right. And then the plumbing, we've worked through a couple sequence issues with him. He is actually scheduled for Monday, Wednesday of next week to do his final inspections. Plumbing inspector comes in and actually checks out the temperatures of the water and the faucets and sinks, so it's part of his effort for sign-on. We have chlorination of the system scheduled for Friday and Saturday of this weekend. That's a requirement for ACAL engineers after the AV process, with the plumbing inspector for the project. So, we're on track with working with the building inspector to achieve that set of 25. And then as we progress through the month of July, and all the building construction processes we're going to be working on through the end of summer and into the start of the school, depending on what, what that list looks like, we've actually started some of that process. So, we're actually a little ahead of these dates with the construction process. Mover move is the admin space. That's going to be a 7:29 to 7:30 to be ready for that admin staff to start in the new space on 8/5. And then movers have a shop and classroom move scheduled at the end of July through the third week of August. With, in preparation for the full teacher and student staff arriving, we are going for the TCO for students with the building department on August 1/3, which then allows the full staff to come in. They have their all-staff orientation that week of the 26th, 3/29, with orientation and first day of school to occur 9/3 on the 11th holiday. And then our contractual C-E-V-O-L-D and substantial obligations are still on track for September 1/5 of this year. Lot of information. Lot of info there, so if you guys have questions, feel free.
So, early on in the project, there was a huge folder?
Yes.
Has there been a decision on where that's going?
It's there. It's in the back of the school.
I know, I know where it was.
It's in place.
But is that where it's remaining? It's going to stay up on that hill? Go ahead.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we've had this project going for a while now. There've been a few revisions under the way. A lot of decisions were made. Some parts of the project were, I think, rather unique. So, what I would like to know is, at this point, now that we're almost completed, are there any unexpected challenges that are going to impact in any way the operating cost, long-term operating costs of the building or the weatherproofing of the building? And the reason I ask that is that in a lot of these school projects, one of the headaches they run into is they cut a corner or change something at the last minute, was they ended up with serious weather intrusion problems. So, I'd like to know, is there any concerns that we have on, about any of those issues at this time?
I remember early on in the process that we introduced a new team leader, someone Lee, who came in, and one of the things he did was he was looking at all the angles in the building. And so, there were places where they took advantage of, they could straighten out some of the angles and corners that he and I had a discussion that he got enhanced the energy efficiency in the building, because there weren't so many jogs and jacks in the building. So, that was something that was done early on in the process. And then we're, we're still meeting the code requirements for a high-performance building. We're going through the commissioning process to determine what of the building is performing as designed, and there'll be adjustments that are made, so there's testing and balancing that's going on with the building. And then, I'm trying to go a bit break to say that, that I think we had a solid team of design professionals that were looking at, you know, envelope system or roofing, the mechanical systems, really, you know, the types of windows that we had, et cetera, the orientation with the sun, things like that. So, I think there was, there was layers of strategies that contributed, in my mind, to having in-house reviews of this board to make a determination that this was a solid design.
So, we're confident that our original codes for both the operation and weather ceiling and all that are still on target.
Yeah, and we will, and that will be proven, I think, I believe, through the commissioning and the other designers.
So, yeah, so, we'll kind of start back in design, just how we designed the building. You have a, I don't know, call it an enhanced envelope, a fairly enhanced envelope. We used a higher grade of air and vapor barrier than a lot of buildings do. You see, they just spray on some stuff. Now, you see houses that they throw brick and plywood up and just take the junk between it. You have an aluminum sheet thing, a sheet good membrane on the outside of the building that's kind of similar to a roof membrane with aluminum foil face around it. That's when, when buildings all silver, it looks like somebody had a little roll aluminum foil. That's a, that's a really good system to start with. That's your base layer. On top of that, you have either metal panel, which is a vented metal panel system, which has, creates a, you know, kind of buffer between the walls and the outside, and so if one warner does get any, or we'll get into these systems, it has a plane to drain out. Same thing with your masonry, your cavity walls. Masonry is very resilient, is used in the back of house, right? Places where it's going to get bumped and banged and, you know, abused a little bit, it's there for resiliency for, for all of those things that happen in trade shops, you know? It's just part of the, part of the process. So, kind of setting up those things so that you have a building that's met, you know, met the need of what's going on around it is kind of the first step. And then ensuring that those things are installed correctly and put in place right. You know, you have onsite monitoring through your testing company, which is a third-party onsite monitoring company, who not only looked at the masonry, but looked at the flashing and the roofing. You have Skantka onsite all the time, you have Gilbane onsite all the time. I'm here three days a week, usually something like that, reviewing the conditions. So, there are a lot of eyes on top of it as your internal team. Another layer to that, you have a commissioning agent, both mechanical systems commissioning and building envelope systems commissioning from the MSBA. Part of their partnership view is that they're supplying a commissioning agent to go through all of those things. So, in terms of systems, you have really good systems. In terms of oversight, you have, you know, pretty much the most oversight you can get without, you know, I don't know what else you would do, to be honest with you. So, you're set up for success. I'm not going to lie, there are going to be roof leaks here and there as we get the building open and start going, yes. We're all going to be here, they're going to get fixed, and they'll get addressed. That's just part of opening up a new building with a, you know, a membrane roofing system. You have a roofing system that has a 30-year warranty, takes maintenance, it takes, you know, care, but, you know, we're setting you guys up for a really efficient and long-term operational building.
Trip, you might just, while we're on this subject, talk about what's going to turn over to the school, the rich, for example, in terms of maintaining the building.
So, what we have done over the years within Gilbane is we actually put together a very robust electronic turnover package, so, many moons ago. And trust me, I've done it, I've pushed the paper, was the ONM manual, the warranties, this is all paper, and you'd have stacks of manuals for every single piece of equipment that would get put into the facility manager's office and either get lost or collect dust for many, many years. So, we've tried to streamline that process, and what we've created is an electronic document that compiles all that information, and it's a very simple, user-friendly, three to four-page cover page that Rich and his staff will be able to go into. Everything's hyperlinked, so he can go down and click on the contact list, and the contact list for the entire project is in that, in that down folder. If he wants to click on ONMs, he can click the ONM. If he wants to click on ONMs, he can click the ONM folder, and by CSI Division, you can go in, you can click in mechanical and drill down any piece of equipment, you pick up that ONM very, very, very quickly in lieu of trying to search a bookshelf for an ONM manual. So something that Rich and I reviewed just recently, this past week and a half. So we're working to cater that to the project and to his needs and figure out exactly what he wants in there. So it's all housed on, we buy like a two-terabyte hard drive, and we then turn that over to a person boxes and boxes of manuals and papers. So it's definitely helped streamline the process a little bit. It's a lot more user-friendly and efficient to access that information.
Pam had a question.
First of all, I have to say, I'm totally blown away. It really is amazing when I see this. It's like I want to burst into applause, but the moment passed. I think we missed it. But I do have a Jeff-type question that, which, you know, for the three of you, you know, are there things related to this project that are keeping you up at night at this point?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's day-to-day. There's challenges that the team runs into every single day, and, you know, we try to prioritize those and resolve them because we know that there's a few more each day that we have to deal with. So a couple of that I noted was that we worked out today, it was the plumbing inspector. Chlorination was a subcontractor, the plumbing contractor, he was not being responsive. We ended up reaching out to other plumbing contractors that we worked with in the past to understand who they use, and we've actually turned that over to the contractor we have onsite. We were able to get that scheduled. He was looking at, like, early August chlorination date, and we were able to work through that and resolve that, so that we now have a Friday and Saturday chlorination date. So that's the type of stuff that we're dealing with right now. It's all leading up to the inspections and being ready for inspectional services next week and then the TCO. So those are the things that we're blocking back on right now.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, just to carry on with Pam. First, it's great to see real photos rather than drawings. I mean, I think that's the most amazing thing. Maybe this is a question for Marianne, or Ford, or Kevin, but where are we in terms of, in terms of the reserves and can contingency funds, fund balances, just in case if some of these questions, issues come up?
Kevin?
Right now, within some of the scope of work that's still unfinished, there are allowances within those line items that, in some cases, can pick up some of that scope that may be over what we anticipated. We do have still the CM contingency and the owner's contingency. Right now, we're projecting, and this is based upon a meeting we just had yesterday, about a $4.5 million contingency balance upon completion.
Anyone else with a question?
Just in regards to, I think it's important to realize that this is a very complex building, and it's not going to be cheaper to, from the standpoint of investing on a regular basis in a capital stabilization fund so that we can stay ahead of the maintenance, stay ahead of things rather than chasing things. The order of conditions from the town of Lexington and the town of Lincoln in regards to the environmental structures that are now required or in place or being put in place, the maintenance and care of those is significant. Just the way that we manage our snow is going to have to change. We're probably going to have to invest in some new equipment to manage that snow in accord with the order of conditions. There's training requirements in the order of conditions and documentation of that training, and we have to report to each town at least on an annual basis. So our investment in a facilities director position and in things related to this building, we cannot lose our diligence when it comes to keeping the building, you know, vibrant, efficient, and serving the educational program. It's not going to be cheaper to operate than this building. It's going to be more expensive when you take all those things into consideration. Some things will be cheaper, like our energy efficiency and that sort of stuff. The day, I think learning is enhanced because of the way it's designed and the light and the movement and, so over and all, it's, I don't want to give the impression it's going to be cheaper to run, you know, because it's not. And this school committee in the policy area, we need to have some really robust and prescriptive, and I never use that, you know, we've worked on policy for a long time, but whoever, whatever superintendents come in the future has to be prescribe the amount of investment that's going to be put into this building, and it's going to be very specific. I had my first nightmare about the building last Tuesday morning when we were late, we were late and we moved into the building and someone else was in there. Who I didn't recognize. And they were changing things and knocking walls down. I got up, I was at the site at 6 o'clock that morning. See was there.
Tremont and Lincoln have maybe been there. Oh, my gosh.
That's all.
What I'd like to do, if I can, as we're closing, this is the last time you're going to see this group here, at least before the building opens, and we'll see what happens afterwards. Obviously, when we have our opening in October, this team will be there. But I just wanted to mention, I was thinking today about when we hired these people, going through the interview process. I remember Skanska came along and they were introduced to Marianne, and then I started finding things out about Marianne, which I won't tell you about. I've got more and more things about her. And I have to tell you, we could have not had better OPM than we have in Marianne and Skanska. This is a lady that came from the right place, you know? She came from the construction world. She was a member of the carpenters' union, you know? So when she goes out the field, she knows what they're doing because she did it. And, you know, and she has the respect of everyone. So Marianne, you and Skanska, you know, there are more people than just you behind this project, but they've been a tremendous addition to our team. Greg reminded me today, but I guess he and I showed up on campus the same time. He's been around just as long as I have, so that means we're short-termers compared to some of you in this room. But Castle Booze, when I think about starting an architectural project, and I'm thinking about drawing it on a piece of paper and all that, where this has come, and you look at this building and you look at the things that you've just heard about it, is phenomenal what your team has done and what you've done. Finding the Minuteman, you know, who would have done that but Greg? It's incredible, incredible. So Castle Booze, I think what you've done is monumental. It sits into the ground, you've met all the pain and the butt things that we've heard from our neighboring towns, and you've met that. You listen to the kids, you listen to students. We sat in this room with students, and they helped in part of the design. You listen to the faculty, you listen to the staff. You guys were instrumental. And then we were looking for a general contractor, and oh, my God, this group comes in, says, "We can do it a year ahead of time." We thought they were smoking something. I forgot I was going to bring in their presentation because I have it on my desk. It was great, you know, Walt and you and everybody. And then John Roach walks in, and I said, "Well, as soon as I saw John, we have to bring him on board." He's our general manager out there. But really, this team has been phenomenal. They're phenomenal to work with. I'm going to miss them, quite honestly, and great to work with. One other part of the--
You're going.
Oh, you are, you're going to be going. One other part of the team that I want to mention is Ed and Kevin. You know, we've been sitting in the meetings once a week. These guys are phenomenal. And I've heard behind Ed's back what people say about him. This guy knows that building, and he knows the process, and he lives that building every single day. The educational plan is embedded into that program. We are so lucky to have people like Ed and Kevin on board. So thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. You can go to what? Can we go? I guess that's what you're going to do.
Thank you, all of you very much. It has been a great relationship, been a great job you're doing. We all see it, and watching sort of a phoenix rise for me, actually, has been marvelous. But I also would like to tip my hat to Ford, and perhaps you might feel that way too, about working with Ford as the, we'll call it, the chair of the building committee and the liaison between you and the school. If nothing more, Ford, you're a fantastic cheerleader for the project and for the school. I'm sure you do much more than that, thinking of the hours that you, the quality hours you put into the project. And I was jokingly said earlier, Dave asked about the boulder out in the back, that we should carve Ford's face in there.
For me, it's fun.
For them, it's work.
Most spaulding.
But seriously, the expanded community team has been just a model for other projects that schools or towns want to do with what the people here on the school have done and what the people who have actually put up this building then, couldn't be, could not be better in my mind. It's just a model. You know, package it and put it on the road.
Well, they do.
Make some money out of it. Well, we certainly will endorse what you do, what you've done for us.
No, it's been a great team.
Thank you all.
It is a great team.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Good. Glad we'll see a little more of you before you ride off into the sunset.
We're not going anywhere.
Good, good.
Boy, doors.
Yeah, it really is, though. Boy, from what I can see. And thank you for your questions about the state of the, state of the school and the future and all that. Worthwhile. Okay, Ed?
Yeah, just before I introduce Bob and Rich, we've hired a new advanced, another advanced manufacturing instructor. We've hired, which that position was a new position because the program is filled over two years, and we need to make room for juniors and seniors. We hired a new early education and care instructor. You may recall Katie Boudreau was elevated to assistant director of CTE, so her position came available. And we had a retirement in electrical, and we were able to find a great candidate there as well, and they've all been signed on board. We still have one or two paraprofessional positions open. And then I want to introduce Bob Girardi is our finance director. If anyone would like to ask him questions, he'll come up and sit down. Yeah, well, Kevin is going to be working with Bob for six years.
I should be so lucky.
I don't know, Bob, if you want to say hello and say--
Sure, I'm just so excited to become part of the leadership team at Minuteman. I've always admired the quality of education, and I've admired Dr. Buckquillan's leadership. I had the good fortune of actually hiring somebody out of your business office into my last district.
Yeah, Michelle.
Michelle Rosendies, and she said so much about how wonderful Minuteman was, and I learned a lot through her as well. I'm just really excited to join this team, be part of the Minuteman leadership team. I'm fiscally prudent. At home, I like to say to my wife and kids, "Don't call me cheap, I'm parsimonious." I just like to deliver the bang for the buck. And so I'll always look at that lens for you to try and make sure that you're getting the most efficient use of your resources. But, you know, Dr. Buckquillan always brings us back to academic return on investment too, to make sure that we're investing in the kids. So I think I'm just, I think it's going to be a wonderful pairing, and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You can stay there, Rich, you can come up. Rich Accon is our director of facilities. Originally, he applied for the business manager's job, and then we talked him into getting the right job. He was the director of facilities at Monty Tech for 10, 11 years.
So I'm, thank you. Been in education for 16 years, the last three as a business manager for Rich Public Schools. Private out of Monty Tech for 13 years. I had two decks. I was the first director of facilities for that building, as well as a coordinator of prospective, so I ran high school, public school, you know, the end program as well. I've done a lot in my, in the short time I've been in education, and I've come here to actually retire. So I've got 15 years, hopefully I can be here for another 15 years. Excited to be here, coming home to locate qualification. I always told everybody that when I have my shirt and tie on, that's my uniform. I grew up in New York, I'm a family of machinists. So I've been pulling machines until I was like 70 and old in my grandfather's shop. So happy to be here, looking forward to making this building what you expect to be in 15 years, considering this.
Very, very good. Thank you, and also welcome. We look forward, we really will look forward to working with both of you, important jobs and positions in the school. So thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with adding these folks onto the team. It's going to be a good year. Belmont Town Meeting Discussion?
Sure. Give the summary.
Absolutely.
Just the status of our communication.
Oh, I've offered the position to the gentleman that we interviewed, and he's going to get back to me by Friday, so.
Very good. Jim? So, please, do we skip?
Well, B and N, yeah, let's skip it.
They sell our workshops?
No, no, summer work proposals. You want me to do that?
Yeah, let's do that first.
Okay, just FYI on page six. You remember last summer, we had a lot of staff working on different projects? This is just a list of the projects that are going on this summer and the staff and the hours. We had a little less money this year. We had about $30,000 to pay staff on different curriculum development. I will mention that some staff have enrolled or been accepted into graduate programs, master's programs, doctoral programs, and they're, some of these projects are coming out of those programs. So I really like it when someone can align their career development work with what we need at the school, and I'm happy with a lot of this work that's going on.
Anyone have a question about?
Yeah, that's all, sorry.
Do people bring these to you?
Yeah, there's a team of us that review the proposals, and we award them based upon how they align with school goals. The hours, most of the requests are for more hours than we can provide, but we offer. It's sort of like a bidding thing, you know? And we just cut it down to the money we have, and no one's ever refused the money we have, so.
Very good, okay.
And the work has always gotten done.
Great. Anything else, all right, about that? Now we'll move on to the Belmont Town Meeting Discussion.
I thought we were going to stick that.
Thank you, Rich. And just a quick background for Bob and Rich. In 2016, Belmont did not vote in favor of the debt, which gave them an option under the regional agreement to withdraw. And the town meeting voted to withdraw in October of 2016, but that would be effective as of the end of June 2020. And during that three-year period, for the three fiscal years, fiscal year '18, '19, and '20, they were not required to pay any capital assessments for the, you know, for the new building during that time. The regional agreement also says that a town may vote to rescind its letter of, to rescind its letter of withdrawal, which the Minuteman School Committee could accept, but it would have to be a unanimous vote to be able to pull it back. At the 2016 meeting, there was talk, superintendent promised to sort of take a look at what the possible options are. That work was done last year. That group came back and said that Minuteman was clearly the provider of choice for Chapter 74 and Core and Volk Tech programs, and the question was, you know, what would Belmont's engagement be with the district? That group also recommended that Belmont stay as a member. That's been sitting on the table for the past year, and now it's been picked up, and the superintendent and the chair of the school committee have convened a work group this summer, and-- summer, and I'm a part of that, as well as representatives from the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant and Warrantome Committee. And that group met for the first time last week, and I'm, and I'm really serving as the liaison there, back and forth to sort of make sure that they know what the issues are. And what I've sort of stressed with them is that, you know, what I've heard from, you know, from you, from you and my colleagues all over this past year is that, you know, there really is no interest here in a third path that would, where there'd be a separate school committee to school, um, committee agreement to provide some sort of access for Belmont. I think Ford's comments a couple of months ago, either you're in or you're out, seemed to be representative of everyone's view here. So Kevin has calculated and passed out at your desk what the dollar figure of the, of the debt service payments that Belmont has not paid over the past three years, and that totals 472,667. And, and so I've been going back to, to, I mean, at this first meeting last week, I said, you know, I, I would expect that the school committee as, would not act favorably on any letter of rescission if there wasn't a payment of 472,667 dollars attached to it. And I guess what I'm really asking is to sort of make sure that that's your thinking. If you think something else, please call me over the summer, because I'm, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it clear what the issue should, what question should be put in front of the town meeting if, if there's a special town meeting that would most likely be held in, in early November to vote as to whether they want to do it. And I'm, I mean, I think, I think part and parcel of that has, has to be a commitment by Belmont to make up that payment of 472,000. Kevin's table actually is very helpful because it shows how that money would be reallocated back, reallocated back unto the nine members there. So I just wanted to sort of give you that status, say that, you know, I know there's a lot of stuff going on here, and I don't think there's a lot of new information that we need from Ed or anyone else here. I think, I think, I think we have it out between the budget book and the great document that they prepared last year for that working group within Belmont. I think, I think, I think the Belmont people have, have pretty much all the information that they need. But the key thing is, is that if, you know, if you think your vote on whether to accept a letter of, a letter to rescind the withdrawal plus a, a payment of those three years of capital charges is not sufficient for you to vote yes on taking it, please let me know because I want to make sure I don't go to a town meeting without understanding the mindset of this group.
Thank you, Jim. I just like, Ed, I'm wondering if you had a chance to talk to the, our attorneys about the process of rescission?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Anyone have a question about what you've heard? Yes?
I think Jim has my feelings correct. I think, you know, Belmont wants to come back, and I would certainly welcome them back. I think it's important that they do what's right for their students, and I think that's the most important thing they can do. I think, yes, they come back just the way we do, and they pay the money that they, the $472,000, and, but we would certainly welcome back. I would hope Jim would be able to stay on this committee, but be that as it may. I think it'd be very important for Belmont to come back. I think it'd be good for us and good for them, but the most important thing is it'd be good for the students to want to come here. It's becoming quite evident to me as I looked at the applications and the firm enrollment report that we have here. I think what we're seeing here now is just the beginning of a full school that's going to be filled with students who are really going to be excited about being here. And if Belmont's a member of this district, then they're going to have, be able to sit at the table just the way that we do in terms of getting students.
Jim, just, just to follow on with the numbers, there were three students from Belmont who graduated this June, and there are eight, there are 18 freshmen coming in next year. So the total number's going from 28 to 42, and that is not, that's a fact that's not being lost, lost within the town.
Good, yes. Anyone else comment or question? Dave?
So I'm going to ask Kevin, this, this document that has the allocation, does that include any legal fees or additional fees that we have as a school incurred with either legal consulting or fees associated with the withdrawal?
This analysis does not, this is strictly debt service, but keep in mind Belmont is a member now and has been assessed for those operating costs that we incurred as part of that, part of that issue. So it's just a portion that Belmont has been excluded from by virtue of their vote that we're trying to recover, make the other towns.
I just wanted to make sure that we've accounted for all, all external costs.
Yeah, they, being, as a member of the district, they've been assessed for those costs, if you will.
Good, anything else? Yeah, I would, if, I'll put in my oil in the water too, that I would expect that Belmont would, would pay the, the capital charges that they had not paid, and would welcome them back for all the reasons that Ford has said and others have said too, about what we need to Belmont students and the town of Belmont and to enrich Minuteman. But that would be a precondition for me, for them to come back. Yes, Alice?
I will say that the other member towns also paid for the extra election. Belmont did pay a share of that, but all of us paid for an extra election, which we would not have had to do.
Right.
So, you know, we would be generous and not push one arm to the other.
Okay. Anything else? Anything, do you have anything to add?
Well, I mean, I mean, I just need clarity, whether, whether it's, whether it's the 472 or whether it's extra stuff. I think, I think, right, I think, I think going, I think going, I think the 472 is, is a number that resonates with the people in Belmont as being something, you know, that, that they would, they would recognize that's certainly their obligation. I think, you know, if you start adding extra things for the pain and suffering or for, you know, for exercising their rights as a member, then, then we start looking backwards rather than forwards, and that the goal is really to look forward, forward here, and...
Jeff?
No extra stuff, no BS, no games. Want to come back, they pay their money, we're delighted to give this opportunity to their kids, that's all we're thinking about. So no bullshit, okay? Just pay what you owe, come back, happy to have you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Jim. Did you, do you think you have the information that you would like, or need, I should say?
Careful how you put that in the minutes, okay?
Okay.
I said careful how that's in the minutes. Legal services?
Moving on to, yeah, approval contract for legal services with Murphy-Lamir and Murphy, and you'll, you'll see the proposed contract. Did everyone get them on the table also?
Yes.
Because the numbering, did you miss getting a package?
I didn't get those on the table.
Huh. This is what needs to be signed. Anyway, the one that, the, the contract that's in your package is, is misnumbered, although the content is correct, it's misnumbered. You can see where the number was skipped, and the copy that's on the table is correctly numbered, and the contact, the content, of course, is correct, but as I say, the contact content in your package is also correct, it's just the numbering that, that is off. Ed will talk about in just a minute, but we sort of discovered, discovered that their contract expired at the end of June, which is why it's, it's on the table now. But Ed can talk about satisfaction with, satisfaction with Murphy-Lamir and Murphy, and other people can chime in too. So we would take a vote tonight to approve the contract if that's what we want to do.
Do you want that motion on the table?
Yes, why don't you, let's do that.
Okay, very good. Then I move that we approve the contract for legal services for a three-year period commencing July 1st, 2019, with Murphy-Lamir and Murphy, PC.
Second. Okay, thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I'm recommending the committee approve this second or third contract with Murphy-Lamir and Murphy. They've been, they've been really wonderful through a lot of complex issues within this district. The reason we were attracted by them to begin with is because of their special ed experience, and that seems to be more routine than anything we do, is the special ed work, which is a very small percentage of what our annual bill to them is about. Because of the complexity of the agreement, because of the direction that we've chosen to go as a district, there's been a lot of complex issues. You know, the vote, all the things around the regional agreement, which we use them and another firm for who specialize in that, but I am very satisfied with them.
Any question about it? Ed, on page two, either, whatever copy people are looking at, either six or seven, six or seven, then item three, is that date correct, including June 30th, 2020, or should that be 2022?
Well, I think they're, they're telling you the rate for each of the years.
Right. But shouldn't that be July 1st, 2021 through blah, 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 June 30th, 2022?
Oh, number three, yes, that should be 23. I'm sorry, I was looking at number one.
It'll be, be 20, should be 22, 2022.
21 through 22, yep.
If you want to make it 23, that's 22.
They would not be happy with me. Come on, you know, you just had all this love for Belmont, let's see.
Get out my beads.
All right, well, as amended.
Anything else that anyone noticed? All right, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so it's 7-0-0, Julia. Okay, thank you very much.
So skipping down to goal number three, I think, I don't know, two.
Two, right, yep.
Non-resident tuition proposal update. I'll turn that, my superintendent's goal, over to Mr. Gamble.
So at our last meeting, we had just come back from meeting the previous day with Deputy Commissioner Wilson and Senior Associate Commissioner Cliff Chang, and, and we had nothing to say other than it was a great, that it was a fine meeting. A couple of days after that, we got some questions from Jeff Wilson, which, which I answered, and, and, and a quoted, quoted part of, part of his, part of his response, which actually is sending us down a different direction. I mean, we had started this whole time taking advantage of that sentence in state law that lets a voc ed, a regional voc ed propose its own tuition commissioner to the, to the commission, I mean, its own non-resident tuition proposal to the commissioner, and we had crafted one for consideration that really separate, had a separate schedule for type A versus type B towns. The type A towns are pretty much the towns that left, plus Watertown and a few more, whereas the type B are the Medfords and the Boston's and those that already invest in their own Chapter 74 programs. And the theory of the state, which they applied to the capital charges back when they, when they, when they last wrote the regulations in 2015, was that the type B town should pay less than type A because they've already made this investment. And so, and so in Jeff's question, he said, "Well, what I'm getting is that you want that same sort of type A, type B difference to be made to show up in the operating tuitions as, as well?" And he said, "If we're going to go down that road," and he said, "It's a long lift," but at least he opened the possibility, "he would want to do it as part of a statewide policy and not just a one-off for, you know, for, for any regional voc school using that section of the state law we'd found." And coincidentally, this is the time where they're preparing a rewrite of the, of the Chapter 74 regs for, for presentation to the Board in September to open up a public comment period, and, and they would hope that there's a, a vote in, in December. And so they've said that, I mean, they've opened the possibility that during this review of all the Chapter 74 regulations, that something like this might be, be on the table. And, and so I wrote back and sort of answered Jeff's other questions, but at the end sort of said, "Look, look, if you're thinking about going from a one-off case for Minuteman to a, to a change in statewide policy that would change the tuition cap for type A towns, great, great, I'm happy to sort of, sort of follow through with that." And then Cliff wrote back to me and said, "Can I send your comments to Tom and John? Tom?"
Hickey.
Tom Hickey and John?
Evans.
Evans. And, and so then I said, you know, I, I was really writing something to answer Jeff's three questions, but if you want something for, for them, I'll be glad to write something, something new. Can I come in and, and talk with you just to sort of make sure about that? And that was last week, and so I turned around something at, you know, at Cliff's, at Cliff's request that was sort of tailored for those, for those people, and I included that in, in the package. So stepping back, I mean, I think we have a chance to, you know, make a case that the type A towns should pay their average, I mean, should pay tuitions based on the average cost, and we can ask that the Board put that in the next set of, set of regulations that they're going to, to, that they think they're going to vote on in final form in December. And I think if, if I feel as optimistic about this in a, in a month or two, I think it's sort of incumbent on us all if, if we all think that that would be a good thing to get support for that change within our own member towns as well, too. And Cliff also asked that this be put in front of Mava and, and others, and I sort of looked to the Superintendent who knows about all things Mava and, and the other superintendents for, you know, in a sense about whether they would be willing to support this kind of change as well.
Anyone, comments ahead, or anyone else or questions about, about this? Alice?
I just, I'm very surprised by this. I also don't actually think that in, you know, getting the, the department to go further down the road of approving five vocational technical programs as a method of disabling access to vocational education, which is what it is. I, I don't think we should be encouraging them to put more of that language into their regs, because the way this is used is to say to the kid who wants to go to a vocational school, "You can explore because your community already has five programs." Even if it's not the five programs they're interested in, they still can't go anywhere in the ninth grade. And I personally think that the type A town method, which was, came into being because of this powwow that occurred in 2000, I'm going to say 11? I don't know which year it was, but there was this big deal that was made, and it had, it causes problems, and I think that for the students, that the type A town model is not a good model. So I would not encourage the department to, to further entrench themselves in that system. I would encourage them to abandon that and to allow the kids to go explore where there are programs they are interested in.
Do you have a response to that, Jim? Or anyone?
I mean, I'm looking at the financial incentives for the Declerence and Watertown and Belmont and trying to find the path of, I mean, the most likely path there. And it's clear that that path goes through the staff at DESI. And if this is how they think about this, I mean, you know, to, I mean, if you're, I mean, my priority is definitely on trying to implement what's in the regional agreement about trying to get as many non-member towns to pay the average cost. And this is, I think, the most likely path. I understand the access, but I think that's a separate policy question, and we've been working with that on a separate policy track. And if that changes, that's fine, too. But the goal here is the average cost pricing. It's not, it is not to reinforce type A, type B. I'm just, that happens to be the best arrow in the quiver to sort of get at the average cost pricing for the, you know, for as many non-member towns as possible. So I understand that, but I don't think it's, in my mind, that's not persuading me to sort of give up on the best shot that I see at getting average cost pricing applied to the Declerence and Watertown.
Anyone, excuse me, anyone else or anything else?
So my comments are about, I think, about process, I guess. So this body here, I work for this body. I don't work for Cliff Chang, and I don't work for MAVA. So for me to go off endorsing something, I think I need to have the, I sort of need to be given that charge by this body. Absent that charge, I would be putting myself at risk in pursuing a statewide policy change that I don't have support for unanimously in my school committee. If you recall, over the years, I don't know if Jim was on the board, there have been times when I asked the board to have a discussion and vote about some issue that I was pursuing on the state level. It might have been more when I was president of MAVA or trying to get some other things changed, or when I was trying to get the legislation passed.
Yeah.
I asked for an endorsement to go work with legislators and state people to move that forward. And I think that's an appropriate request that the superintendent should be making of the school committee when this kind of an effort is being discussed. We've had a lot of good discussions, you and I. We've had good discussions with the Department of Ed. But now to, I don't, I'm hearing like, Ed, you have this instruction to go to MAVA and work this through. And I'm not, I love all those men and women in MAVA, and believe me, they listen to me about some things, other things they don't. So you understand where I'm coming from? Does that feel, that process disconnect for me right now, is I have to be honest about that? Because I couldn't go wholeheartedly to MAVA and bring the Belmont agenda to MAVA. I can bring my school committee's agenda to MAVA.
Yeah. I think, I think, I mean, I'm wearing a lot of different hats here, but one of the agendas is to implement what the regional agreement says. But I totally agree with you on process there. And, I mean, that's why I wanted to make sure that this was circulated here. I mean, we've had other conversations in the past where members of the committee have spoken out about the need to change the financial incentives for the non-member towns. And so, I mean, yeah.
Pam, Evan.
Oh, sorry, Pam.
Well, I guess I also want to just go further down this process road, because I guess at this moment, I'm a little concerned. My memory is that the school committee approved the letter that Jim had drafted to the commissioner to set up a meeting to discuss these issues, and approved having Jim and Dave and Ed go and meet with the commissioner. And I think that's the extent of the conversation that the school committee has had. So, and I know I was surprised to see a letter signed to other schools and, you know, signed, you know, from the, you know, clearly looked like it was signed from the Minuteman School Committee. And I guess I am concerned that we're already going, you know, I think it's not only what role, you know, does Ed play, but also I feel like maybe we need to be, like, just ensuring that we're moving as one body here, because it seems like we may not be, and that could be problematic. And I think it could be problematic for what you're trying to do. So, but if I'm wrong, that we did sort of agree to more than, you know, the step of going and setting up the meeting with the commissioner, please let me know.
I mean, I think, I think, I think where I took, where I took the process beyond the literal meeting there, was that we had the meeting, and then I was asked questions, and I answered the questions, and those questions are a matter of public record. And participants said, I want to forward this public document to someone else. And I just took the opportunity to edit it so it would make more sense.
Jeff? I'd like to know what Ed thinks about moving forward with this. Because you said that you don't feel comfortable unless the full school committee is behind you, okay? But what is your opinion on whether this approach is one that is in the best interest of the district?
The, there are components of the approach for the, let's say, the solution that I think would be helpful to the district. There are other unintended or intended consequences to this solution that I cannot support, and namely restricting or making it more difficult for some students to have access to Minuteman. I don't think the department, and I've had one-on-one with the commissioner and all the above folks that we've met with together about this, I know they don't understand the consequences of their regulations in regards to restricting access and accentuating the program, the problem of waiting lists. And that cascades into what else the department is going to do, that if I start supporting this solution, I'm fearful that the department is going to invoke their own solutions, not ours, that are going to have statewide consequences for kids and school districts and member towns of other regional vocational school districts. It's a much bigger problem than just Minuteman.
So as a follow-up, would it be fair to say that this is not the only issue that you have concerns? You have concerns about the new set of regulations coming up as a whole, and their conversation on this may be, although it might have a goodie for us, that might be useful, may be indicative of some thinking that they're going to come forth in the regulations that is going to be very detrimental to kids' access to the school?
Yes, and I've been involved with MAVA on these conversations. I've been involved with the AVTE, the Alliance for Vocational Technical Education, and we're putting together a policy paper on that. I don't know if my concerns are going to be honored within that paper. I've written some of my own things and shared them with the commissioner. One was fairly provocative, and he was, took me to the woodshed.
Right.
But, so, again, it goes to process. My voice is, speaks for the students of Minuteman, it also speaks for all students in Massachusetts when I have the opportunity. And I do feel differently about this than a lot of other superintendents do, which is one of the reasons that I do get calls from those folks, because they want to hear my perspective, because I have a different perspective.
With respect to the access issue?
With respect to the access issue.
Then would it be appropriate, then, for us to directly address that through the school committee by stating in writing, and of course you could, you know, write this up and we can look at it, our primary concern here? Is if you're concerned and you don't want to, so if this is really the real issue coming up, that is actually bigger than we were talking about, because it concerns these new regulations and access to the school, then maybe that's what our focus should be on, so that he'll have another piece of evidence saying that this is the reason why this restricted access, if they do not understand this, is a problem. So maybe that's really the most important thing for us to focus on with, you know, we can mention the other thing is true, too. It is certainly true that when you, when you, when you give somebody a undeserved discount on something, they're not willing to, and that language was in there. So we can certainly add that to it as well. But perhaps we should look at what the most concerning issue is with respect to these new regulations coming out, as well as pursuing the little portion of this that we're still interested in.
I think it's completely appropriate for a school committee to have a discussion on policies, statewide policies. I mean, it's, they're asking for feedback from, I don't know if they're in public comment period or not on this, but there are many of us that are involved in different things where our voices can be heard to craft some of that. And I think it's completely appropriate for a school committee to have that discussion, not a, you know, three-month or three-hour, or maybe even 30-minute, but get some documents, look at it, and see if you can craft maybe two separate statements, one that has to do with this issue of average cost, and a separate one that speaks clearly for access. Because right now, the Minuteman voice is being confused because of some of the things that has been going on here, some of the things I get asked in different venues. And I just think we're on a slippery slope when Minuteman's voice is being interpreted by three or four or five different voices.
Then can we, sure, can we unconfuse it by coming out with a declarative statement signed by the school committee, perhaps have that discussion in September? You can come up with a, you know, a draft for starting point for discussion, have the discussion in September, and get something out so our voice on it is clear and unified.
From superintendent's point of view, I like that idea.
Thank you.
We'll already have sent it to the board, and it will go to public comment, and it'll be finalized by December. So I would recommend that something be written right away.
I heard that was going to be delayed.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, I mean, so I think the process works both ways. I mean, I think, I think the access issue has been pushed by the superintendent without a school and committee vote, and the documents that were sent there were also submitted there by, and without my view.
I have to stop you there, though, forgive me. The school committee approved my goals, and for the last four years, and going back 10 years, the phrase of access has been in my superintendent goals, which have been approved by the school committee.
Right, but you mentioned a specific document that got you in hot water, and if that had been...
Well, that was mine alone and my fault, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I would send it to him again.
But again, but that shows that you're speaking with two voices. You have your personal voice, and then you've got the school, the school voice.
No, I disagree, I respectfully disagree.
Looking forward, I, I mean, I welcome this body, you know, that the school and committee, to be actively engaged on the front end of all policy, policy and conversations. And so that, that's, I mean, that's the main, the main point there. The second is, I see the average cost and the access as two issues that are separable. Now, the committee may have a different view, may have a specific view about what's most important, one or the other, but to sort of say that average cost pricing is going to put access, is in conflict with our access goals, I don't see that yet.
Ford?
Rather than prolonging this, I would recommend that Jeff's comments be something that we have an action plan on and bring that back. If it's a meeting in August or September, I don't care when, but I think August or September, yeah. I think access is my issue. That's really my biggest issue. And when I see a school 15 minutes down the road being built, they're going to have Chapter 74 programs, I think that is ridiculous, absolutely a waste of money. And that should be, those students should be able to come here, and it would save them some money in terms of their building. But be that as it may, access is an issue that I have. I think that you're right, we need to speak as a school committee, and I think any time we talk to any governmental body, it should be a school committee decision.
So how do you propose that we go forward with this?
Jeff wrote it beautifully, and Jeff, you can reword again.
For the superintendent, go ahead, Jeff.
Right, so I think that the, to cover perhaps both of these issues, but certainly the access issue, I think that it would be wise for the superintendent to come up with a starting point, a draft resolution for us, that it be sent to us, and we discuss it at our next meeting, whenever that is, and come up with a unified voice. Now, if the super, I think that both issues have merit. I've always thought that the issue has merit, is that if you have a cost that somebody pays that's less than the average cost, you're encouraging them not to join. I think that the twist for me here was, in reading between the lines, it seems that what they're trying to do with political shenanigans in the background, they're trying to leverage one issue along with the other issue. And I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Because of the two issues, although they're both important, and I've been working on both of them for more than a decade, the average cost issue as well as the access issue, the access issue is more important. So if we can, I would like to come up with documents on both issues, if possible, but I want to make sure that they don't use the average cost issue as a, as part of some sort of political tool to make the access issue even worse. So I'd give that duty to the superintendent, since he's been, you know, working with it on these people the most, to come up with a document or two for us to discuss at our next meeting. Alice?
I'd like to recommend that when you do that, you address the Chapter 74 vocational technical programs, because they're developing other types of vocational technical programs that are sort of vocational technical program light. And those programs, if they were included in the five, would be devastating for many, many kids.
I just, I just come back, I just want to say something myself. What I would find worthwhile would be if we could get information from the Department of Education about what they are considering to propose, and we, maybe some people are really in on that, I confess, all right. I'd love to read it, and that would help, that would be...
It's a two-page summary.
Okay, that would be very helpful. Could you send that to us? I would find that helpful to know, to use that in the discussion that we're having tonight, and also in the future. I would agree that coming, designing or a resolution or for shaping a resolution on both issues, on access as well as average cost. I do think the average cost is an, I personally think that's an important issue, too. Not, I'm not, I'm not going to say which is more important than the other, but I think both of them are very important. So I would, I would like to see Ed craft and draft a resolution that talks about both of those areas. And I would really be interested in hearing what DESI is putting out so far about where they're going with changing regulations, and I think that would be worthwhile. Pam?
You said what I did, what I was going to say, which is, Jeff, you had said both if possible, I'd like to remove the if possible, because I think they're both important. One, the average cost, a lot of work has gone... One, the average cost, a lot of work has gone into that access, and I don't want to lose either of those, so I'm just going to ask that, you know, both, trying to...
Do people feel comfortable with that? Anyone feel uncomfortable with that? Ed, you feel comfortable with that, drafting, crafting, drafting?
They're at peace, yes.
Very good, I, that's our intention, is to make sure that you're at peace. To bring back to the next meeting, or to office, to have the officers look, take a look at it during the summer?
I'll send it to you this summer, the officers, yeah. We'll see how your election goes.
All right, okay. How does that sound to people? We, the officers who are elected in July, or today, would take a look at it, and then would come back for the full committee in the, in September meeting.
Great.
Okay, all right.
Enrollment's on page 15.
Yeah, yep.
Jim, you might want to know that Hillsboro student there?
Yes.
Is moving to Belmont.
Okay.
So, all right. It's all good stuff.
Any other, any other comments about the enrollment?
No.
How people are feeling? All right?
It's very exciting.
Yeah, it sure is. It sure is. Okay.
RFP, we have the RFP out nationally through the UMass Donahue Institute and the Athletic Business Association. We seem to have generated more interest, or the RFP has generated more interest from companies outside of Massachusetts, so we look at proposals at the end of the month, Kevin?
August 1st.
August 1st, yeah. I will mention on Phase 3, what you may recall is the property where the Tremont School is.
Yeah.
Blue Pearl Veterinary Hospital toured it today to look at the possibility of opening our Vet Tech Program up there.
Oh.
They were very excited about the building in their, because I didn't know this until they were up there today, I didn't tell you, Kevin, yet. They're looking to move their Waltham Hospital out of Waltham, and the, the head surgeon who was there, within an hour, had called the CEO in Tampa, Florida, and that he's flying up Wednesday to meet with us and look at the facility. So, we haven't put an RFP out for that yet, and we would have to.
You'd have to.
Or we would just do a lease agreement. But anyway, that's, was pretty exciting.
They'd have to get like an occupancy permit, or the right term is for, from the town of, from Lexington, I guess it would be.
No, that we would rent, the lease is with us.
Lease with us, we wouldn't have to get permission or okay from anybody.
Not to lease it as it is. If they want to operate a business, then we'd have to go work with the town around that permitting.
Oh, so this is...
But in terms of operating our program area...
As a program, okay.
It's perfect, and for the longer term, they want to move their hospital out of Waltham.
And would the hospital still be part, considered part of the program?
Yes.
Okay. Any question about that?
Because of the legislation we had passed.
Yeah, right.
We can enter into long-term agreements with...
Right, right.
Public-private partnerships that are mission-compatible and campus-centric.
Very good, yes. All right. So August 1st, you'll get the RFPs.
Yeah.
We have one this time.
Looks that way. We don't know who's applied, but we've had to provide answers to additional questions, and we're having a Skype-based meeting in a few weeks to answer more questions, so we'll have a sense at that meeting who's, who's downloaded the RFP and interested in submitting.
Well, we certainly hope there's movement on that, and that, pardon, and that we got a greater response than, than the first time. So you'll keep us abreast of that. Okay, Kevin, amended vote, amended budget?
Thank you, yes. You'll find in the packet on page 16 and 17, proposed transfers in the FY '20 budget. Yes, we're only 16 days into the fiscal year, however, we need to reflect some of the reorganization that we've been, that have been implemented, as well as changes that we needed to execute in order to reflect some of the required educational services to accommodate the, the enrollment. So, as you know, under our, you know, under our regional agreement, we can do transfers within function codes, but as we go between function codes, it requires a vote of the school committee. So I've listed the, the vote that's being requested on page 17, it gives you the detailed line items of those, of those transfers, but to, but the vote we need is summarized on page 16.
Okay, any, yes, Jeff, sorry.
Yes, I move the transfers as described on page 16 and 17 of our packet as written.
Thank you. Any, any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? I think it's six, six would be, then someone is not here. Yep. Okay.
Thank you very much. The next item being requested is use of the stabilization account to purchase technology equipment. Again, a situation where our enrollment is dictating that we need to acquire additional equipment for one-to-one devices for our incoming freshmen. You may recall that we did authorize $200,000 for emergency communication equipment and furniture recently. We're seeking an additional $75,000 from the stabilization fund for one-to-one laptops. We budgeted about $75,000 for this purpose, and we've, given that the enrollment came in almost twice as much as we anticipated, we, we need these funds in order to complete the purchase. It requires a two-thirds vote of the committee that's present and voting.
Two-thirds vote of the entire school committee?
Present and voting.
Present vote.
I move to authorize expenditures now to exceed $75,000 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of technol...
Sure, here, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? It'd be seven, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Kevin, just a, just a follow-up from last month, do you have a schedule for when the OPED fund, fund is going to be rebalanced?
Yes, the treasurer's been working on that, and as a matter of fact, your packet has the minutes of the meeting that voted the action, which the treasurer needed to open up the Vanguard Fund. Apparently, the application for opening up this is quite lengthy, but she's been working on it, and I sent her these minutes, I think that was the only open piece. So we couldn't get to June 30th deadline because of that and other things, but it's, it is moving along.
Thank you. Kevin, are you going to want any warrant articles signed this summer?
Uh, warrants?
I thought we were going to do it today.
Yeah, we, we had intended to do that day, that kept by, but I'll check with Michelle, and we'll contact the finance subcommittee at the appropriate time.
Yeah, because I could drop by and sign.
Thank you.
And Jim could too.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, you'd only have two of us, because Carrie is not on the committee anymore, and we haven't appointed anyone else.
And we're planning on coming in Tuesday at 11:00.
Yeah, Tuesday, oh yeah, we could do it next Tuesday if you have them ready.
Great, I'll make sure...
We have a finance committee meeting, or no, we have a meeting, a policy committee meeting, but we could do it next Tuesday if they're ready.
Tuesday at 11:00, okay, thank you.
If they're ready.
Oh, okay.
If not, we'll come in another time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, subcommittee reports, Alice, a policy subcommittee update.
So, we're meeting over the summer. Next week, we will complete the first complete run-through of the admission policy, we're supposed to meet for two hours, and we'll develop a schedule to bring that policy to the school committee, and then there's a whole Department of Education process that goes along with that, which I'm sure the administration will know how to do. We're working on an archiving system for the policy manual, something that is sustainable within a school district. MASC gave us a proposed contract, we asked them questions, we got their answers, we have to, you know, see whether that is something we want to recommend to you or not. We're also still looking at the naming policy. Amy brought forward fingerprinting, staff absence, and we also have building facilities maintenance, which I don't believe we're going to find a boilerplate MASC facilities maintenance policy that's going to be anything close to what you have in mind. So I wonder if you can...
Might come under the finance.
Maybe.
... policies around, almost aligned with some sort of an investment policy.
Have you seen anything like that, any models?
I have looked on that.
I don't remember seeing, but, so we may, we may be in new territory, but they can use an update on that, because a lot of those policies didn't ensure the maintenance of the facilities over the past 40 years, so maybe they need a new one.
If you would, put your criteria in writing, so we can focus on that with Kevin too, but I think that's very important.
So, actually, that is the, the most recent one that's come to our attention, and that's pretty much what we're working on. I had the opportunity to talk with someone from Madison Park, the executive director, he said that their admissions policy, they are going to be specifying that instead of just a guidance counselor recommendation, that they will allow an adult, like a teacher at the school, someone who actually knows the kid. So, that is actually really interesting, because you don't, then you're not kind of stuck with just somebody who may not know the kid making the recommendation, so, you know, that's something I sent over to Ed and Amy. That's all.
Okay. I'll take a look in the next, between now and Tuesday, see if I can find anything about facilities maintenance policy, maybe even the town, for instance, the towns may have one as opposed to the schools, but I'll, I'll look and see what I can, what I can find. Any questions for Alice? Again, who does yo' woman's work on the policy, I must say. And we, we're enjoying working with Amy on this too, who's forthcoming. Okay, Strategic Planning Task Force, she's not here, anyone reporting for her?
Alice.
Hi, lovely.
So, the last time we met was the first time we've met in a very long time. Let me know. So, we have already completed goal number one, which was materials for new school committee members, that, you remember that all went up on the website. The second goal that we had talked about was a strategic planning goal for top priorities in leadership going forwards. We're talking about in the future, not now. So, we, it takes quite a while to ramp up, to understand the full, the full picture of something like leadership, and, you know, what are you looking for in leadership, and Dr. Boquelin's goals focusing more on the leadership aspects, less on the day-to-day, are very, you know, kind of give you a flavor of that. We're going to be meeting again...
Next week.
Next week, oh, okay. And we're just looking at research on what types of superintendent job descriptions look like now, that kind of thing, that kind of thing. We'll be coming back with a schedule, October, September, October, November, schedule of what we're going to be bringing to you. Is that about it?
Any questions for them? Them? I would look, look forward to that, thank you. And then after the secretary report, we'll do, secretary report, Pam Nurse.
Okay, at the table, you have some changes to the minutes. The first one is under section 4A, and it's adding the sentence that's highlighted in yellow, and it's, we've requested that we track Minuteman Technical Institute students and through those, or one system of students that obtain employment and pay down their loan. So that's in addition to the minutes.
So that will be added to 4A?
That'd be added to the end of 4A.
4A, okay. And Julia has these?
Yes, yes, Julia wrote up these, and highlighted these.
Okay.
So thank you for those who sent the changes, I had enough time, so if they have this prepared. Under goal number one, B, you will see the second highlighted section, and this one is a change, you know, the highlighted one, and basically what the change is, is noting that where Mr. Horton noted that the meeting was requested by a letter approved by the school committee, that went with the second meeting, not the first meeting, as was indicated in the minutes that you received in your packet. And then the, the third change is under the superintendent negotiations of the open subcommittee, where we didn't have an, a motion to amend a previous motion, that Carrie made a motion that was approved for a 2.33% salary increase, so we fixed the minutes to reflect that.
Okay.
So, those changes, I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Any question or comments? Jeff?
I think the minutes are greatly improved. There are, the details, right level of detail is there, and it's very readable. So, very happy.
Thank you. And thank you, Julia. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Seven, zero, zero. All right. Jim has a couple of remarks to make.
I mean, not only is this the final school committee meeting in this building, it's the final school and committee meeting where Kevin Mahoney is serving as, as our assistant superintendent for finance. I just want to, want to take, take time to thank you, and, and just say, say it's been a pleasure, a pleasure, I'm working, I'm working with you, you really have done a terrific job. I heard, heard of your work long before, before I joined, joined here, so I, and I just wanted, wanted to pass it on, and I didn't get a school committee vote for it, but I do have something here, here, I'm here for you as well, so.
You do?
Yeah, it's a, it's a bag from Belmont, and water leak and fluid, so, but...
Of course. Thank you.
Yeah. No, no. It's a story of political and finance, finance and, and building, building projects in New York, New York, but I'm Robert Moses.
Wow. That's amazing. Yeah. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, it's been a real pleasure to work here over the past 10 years, and it's, it's been really exciting and rewarding for me to see how the district has advanced through the last decade, and I think, well, we had some bumpy roads along the way, but I think at the end of the day, we kept our eye on the prize, and it's all real well. It's been a great professional experience for me, and enjoyed working with all of you, and again, thank you very much, it's been a real pleasure, I appreciate it.
I think we all would add the same things about you, about how we feel about you, so I won't, we won't go around, unless people want to, around the table to say so, but it certainly has been a pleasure, and also, the school, Minuteman, has benefited from you being in your position, very definitely benefited the, the whole Minuteman community and town, so thank you, Kevin, very much, and have a great time in the next part of your life. Jeff?
I would just like to give one specific. At the time when we did hire you, and I was looking far in the future at the possibility of the building product, project, I understood the fact that one of the challenges we had was that from our financial point of view, we did not have a good reputation within the community. And putting aside everything else you've done, you solved that in very short order. You took us from somebody who they did not think much of in terms of, they could complain about, they could stall, whatever, to some, in which that issue completely disappeared from the table right away. That was the number one thing that needed to be done before we can move ahead to a building project, and you did it in very short order. you did it in very short order. So I thought I'd just, a historical reference to remind you of that, what I see as the number one biggest accomplishment, even though it happened quite a while ago.
I think you did it all. Whatever needed to be done was done, took initiative to do it, but also responded to people when they had ideas about it. So thank you, Kevin. Okay. Do I hear, moving on to reorganization, election of officers, do I hear a vote to allow the superintendent to preside temporarily?
Question. I think I know the answer to this, but all the votes for here, what kind of votes are they? Are they just the majority of whoever's here?
Yes.
And not weighted? Is that correct? Or they are weighted? Okay. But only the people here, weighted the people here?
Right, right.
We have 58% of the total weighted vote here.
Okay.
So the majority of that.
Fifty-eight percent?
Isn't that very?
Nope, nope. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? None? All right. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to open nominations for the role of chair of the Minuteman Regional Locational Technical School Committee till the year 2019 through 20. Do I have any nominations?
I will nominate Pam Nurse. Do you want to know why?
No.
Yes.
I would like to nominate someone who is going to be here for a while. Given the transitions that we have upcoming, I think it's important for the leadership of the school committee to be someone who's going to be moving forward with the district.
Okay, Mr. Squawling. Are there any other further nominations?
I'd nominate Dave Horton, if he wanted to put his name in for one, for one on the.
I'll ask those questions. I'm just taking nominations now.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations?
I believe that, was this your fifth year as an officer in a row?
I looked it up, and this is my fourth year in a row. But I was interim for about a month and a half, for two meetings when Nancy Banks left. So I was interim for two months and then elected four years. So I've been four years plus two months. So I don't know if that makes me ineligible or not, but that's, I did check that.
We looked at the bylaws, and it says you can serve five full terms as an officer. Then you have to take a year off or more. So if there are no more nominations, I'll ask the first nominee, are you willing to serve in that position if so?
If voted, I will accept.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
You are so.
Yes, I would accept.
Anointed, you will serve.
Yes, I would serve.
Okay. So we have to do a weighted vote now. So this, are we prepared to, I have at least three business manager people that have, so there is, I have. Is that the chart? Yeah.
Yeah, I have it, too. I believe? Yeah. Oh, this is.
That's scary.
We're ready.
Okay. So.
Hold up a little longer, please.
All in favor of Pam Nurse as the chair, please signify by raising your hand. I now turn the meeting over to the newly-appointed chair. And before I do so, I want to thank Dave Horton for his service as an officer and for your time as chair. I didn't bring you any gifts, because I thought you were going to get reorganized.
There's time for that.
There's time. Okay. Why don't you go over here, and I'll move. No, come on over here.
Hey, Dad.
I think that's yours, right?
Oh, thank you, since, yes. Since Jim knows. And I didn't bring any papers. Okay, so now you all have to bear with me here. Okay, so I guess I now am opening the nominations for the position of vice chair. Ford?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Leonie. She's my dear, so I don't know how that works. I haven't talked to anybody about anything. But for the same reasons that you have nominated, that's what I'm picking for. And she represents the town in sense of our students.
Are there any other nominations? I'll nominate Jeff Stuland. Same thing. He's planning to stay with the committee for a while. He's got the experience to back you up. Also, I don't know if Jen, if Jen, if we were to appoint Jen, and she would say no, then what do we do? Well, that's why I was hesitating.
I guess. I would have been happy to vote for her, but my understanding was that this current year, she did not want that to be wrong with this. So why would you?
That's what I heard from her.
So otherwise, I'd be more in favor of her than me, except for my understanding that opponent, which we've not verified.
Okay. We could elect her, and then she could decline. Well, let me, so are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. Jeff, would you accept the nomination? Jennifer is not here, so we don't know. So all those in favor of Jennifer Leonie for vice chair, raise your hand.
Well, were we going to wait until we heard from her to vote? I'm a little, not quite clear about that.
I'm working on the assumption that this is a meeting that we elect our officers, and we could, if the committee chose to elect her in abstention, I'm assuming the committee can do that. And then if not, we would need to have another election.
Right. And just a couple of comments. We, the bylaws say we shall elect our officers in July. It doesn't have any other accommodation for that, probably should. But, and also a few years ago, we started the practice of confirming with the nominee that they were willing to serve as a courtesy and as a, sort of a matter of past practice. So with her not being here, I think we run the risk of, you know, violating our past practice. And I might ask the person who nominated her to withdraw her nomination.
Do you want to call her?
She's at a death in the family, and she's not available.
I withdraw her nomination.
Okay. We have on the table a nomination for Jeff Stuland. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Jeff Stuland as vice chair? Okay.
You get to hit them.
Oh, yes. Oh, I like that. Okay. I'd like to open up nominations for secretary. Ford?
I'd like to nominate Dave O'Connor.
I didn't ask you to advance. I have concerns based on my current position outside of Minuteman, with having traveled, and I may not be able to.
Can I make a nomination? I can make a nomination, can I, Jeff?
Well, you may.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Dave Horton for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Jim Gamble.
Are there other nominations? Then I declare the nominations closed. All right. Dave, would you, if elected, serve?
Yes, I would serve.
Jim, if elected, would you serve?
Did I have the same concerns about the continuity and the fact that I may not be here for more than one year? So I'd be willing to serve, but I certainly recognize that as a, you know, as a consideration to vote for someone else.
So that's a yes. But, okay. All those in favor, oh, and I think, Dave, you withdrew your, is that right? Okay. All those in favor of David Horton as secretary? There are six. All those in favor of Jim Gamble? Well, I think even I can do that math. Congratulations, Dave, on your election as secretary. So I declare the nominations closed.
It's been nice when you can have anybody nominated, you know, God.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All in favor?
Good job.
Thank you all.